You're good to go.
Welcome, everyone. It's Monday, June 27, 2022. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Clerk Colerole, please.
Councilmember Heller.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Present.
Councilmember Page.
Thank you. Next item, Pledge of Allegiance. Stand and join me.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item B is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move to item A, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second, got a motion and a second to approve the consent agendas. Are any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item F1. Staff reports are in your packet, council. Are there any questions of the staff? Seeing none, we'll move down to item G1. Now, this item has been continued, or it needs to be continued, to a date certain of August 8, 2022. So I'm requesting a motion to accomplish that.
Mr. Mayor, move that we move sub FY 2002-0002 to a date certain of August 8, 2022.
Second, got a motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next item is public hearing, S U V FY 2021-0010, Petropoint Town Homes. This is a combined bumerie final plat. With this item, council, does anyone need to declare a conflict on this land use issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to make a record that either the applicant or the landowner, last name is Paige, and I just wanted to make a public record that I have no relation, I don't even know that person, so, just to be clear.
Great, thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing item. In just a moment, I'll call the applicant up to address the council. After the applicant speaks, we'll have an opportunity to question the applicant, council members. Following that, our staff will address the council. Following the staff presentation to the council, I'll open the public hearing and allow anyone, either in person or online, to testify. At the end of the public comments, the applicant will have a final opportunity to clarify or rebut any testimony that might come forward. After that, we will close the public hearing and the council can deliberate to a decision. So with that, who's representing the applicant tonight?
Sister Petropoint.
Yes, I'm sorry. I did the number. You haven't memorized your file number, so, Petropoint Town Homes, combined.
He should sit down.
Bumerie final plat.
I can get a stool.
No.
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 Well, welcome. If you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Craig Kolchak. My address is 4839 Mountain View Drive. I represent the owner of this property. We've had several meetings. To bring it up, we recently had a designer view hearing, our fourth. Prior to that, we had a city planning and zoning hearing. Planning and zoning hearing went well. I've been involved with six projects so far within the city of Garden City over the past eight years. They'll joke on, let's see, 38th Street Town Homes, 40th Street Town Homes, 43rd Street Town Homes, Flourish Town Homes, and currently the Petropoint. Say the least, this application has been very challenged. At the start of this project, I'd planned to request a minor land division to make it simple to separate the vacant portion of the parcel from the existing home and the yard, and was told I could do the minor land division, but planning would not allow me to develop that property once I divided it. Kind of an idea contrary to the purpose of the minor land division. I was told I could have to do and enter into a PUD application. And I've been able to submit a minor PUD parking, which was one of the issues we had, would not have been an issue. Through several divine changes, I feel we satisfied that challenge. Prior to the fourth design hearing on June 6, 2022, a planning and zoning committee hearing was held by the committee on May 16, where we discussed the issues from the third design review hearing, and was given a unanimous approval to move forward with the project conditionally. At the end of the fourth design here, review hearing on the 6th of June, planning made a statement that if the project is not approved during the upcoming city council on the 27th of June, we'll have to wait to re-submit for a year. That's just not going to be conducive to the client remaining on this project. I've got a soft spot for improving the community of Garden City. I'd like to continue the small pocket developments that I've been involved with and hope we can come to an agreement on Petropoint Town Homes. Following the contrast of key issues with June 6 design hearings, I sent you guys a packet identifying the issues that we were involved with and included a highlighted issue of what the findings of fact, conclusion of law at the P and Z hearings to be. So this is a small project. It's about .43 acres. We've got seven townhomes. We started out with eight. We had a challenge on the parking, as far as guest parking goes. We removed one of the townhomes and increased our square footage on open space requirements. We've met that. It's around 15% requirements, 10%. And then we looked at 43rd, 49th Street parking to the east of the property. We've had to include the the existing home and its property as part of this development because of the PUD requirements. And we were able to find another four units over there. We've got a total of six that we could use. Requirement's three and a half. We really can't use half of a parking space. We've got two onsite. And talking with HHD, we can't really designate this as guest parking because there's no delineation between regular parking and guest parking. But the fact of the matter is, there's at least 16 spaces on 49th Street that would be able to be used as guest parking. One of the concerns was addressed was, and we've had an issue with the garbage collection. I don't know if you guys have driven down Allworth and Adams Street on a Tuesday, but there are hundreds and hundreds of garbage cans that are on that street that are set up on the sidewalk. The sidewalk's designed to accommodate those trashcans. If you take a look, there's a designated strip that's about two feet wide. It's red and it's got a brick pattern on it. That brick pattern is there to accommodate mailboxes, street signs, power poles, and garbage cans. I got a letter from Republic Transport in January that gave us a list of options that we could do for the trash pickup. One of them was to have a turnaround, but with .4 acres and about 100 feet, maybe 98 feet deep. It doesn't kind of leave that conducive to a turnaround. So that was out. And then they gave us another deal where they could back in, but that wasn't a safe method of picking it up. The third method was pick it up the street, just like everybody else. The findings, and so the design review committee said that the development will create an unsafe environment between vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclics, was just not true. The findings of the planning and zoning committee said that the use will not reasonably diminish either the health, safety, or welfare of the community. So it's contradictory to what the planning or the design review hearing mentioned. The next thing that was proposed, trash pickup, detrimental to safety. And again, they said, hey, look, reasonably not going to be diminished, safety, health, and welfare of the community. There's no evidence that the proposal is detrimental to public health, safety, or general welfare of the community. The continued maintenance of the attached sidewalk along Allworth continue to provide safe pedestrian travel way. That was the findings of the public planning and zoning area. At the beginning of this, we required to put in a bicycle rack. I think that was on the second design hearing. We put in three bicycle racks. On the third design review hearing, they wanted us to add another three bicycle racks. Item nine states, you know, that at least, on page 14, the planning and zoning recommendation, that at least one bicycle rack shall be provided onsite in accordance with Garden City Code 84D. And we added three. And then on June 6, they added another three, which made it six. Nothing against using a bike rack to store your bicycles, but in an area that's got another development behind it, multiple apartment complexes behind it, I myself wouldn't feel safe leaving my bicycle overnight wrapped around a bicycle rack to begin with. And I think that adding the three that we put in there is significant enough. The other thing that they mentioned was that inadequate parking addresses creating a hazardous condition for bikes and pedestrians. It's 98 feet deep. We've got common space. We've got two parking spaces. It serves no detriment to the bicycle parking or pedestrian parking. We've got a 10-foot bicycle path that planning has required us to put in to the west side of the property. Initially, that bicycle path took up 10 feet of our parcel, which strictly reduced the backyards of the western townhomes to three feet in the backyard. I contacted the neighbor to the west and talked him into giving us a five-foot easement on his property specifically for half of that bike path. We've got legal descriptions and stuff in the packet that explains that. And again, you know, page 10, on the P and Z recommendation, use will not reasonably diminish either health, safety, or welfare of the community. No evidence of proposals detrimental to public health, safety, or the general welfare of the community. Continued maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And the conclusion of the design review says, even though trash services can be accommodated along Allworth, does not mean it is safe. The hazard is still there. There is no hazard. Everybody gets their garbage picked up, you know, the mile length or mile and a half length of Allworth. There is a median within the drive of Allworth and Adams Street that accommodates anybody wants to go around the garbage bin where they're picking up. That's exactly what they do. They go around through the median and around the garbage collector. I had a chance to stop and talk to one of Garden City policemen and asked him in the 20 years that he's been a police officer, has there ever been any issue with traffic or safety on Allworth and Adams Street because of the trash pickup? And he said, there's never been any issue nor any complaints. This is a great little project. It's a small site. It's a site that we're using to do to kind of include diversity within the development around there to affordable housing. The five other projects that I mentioned, I worked with Neighbor Works of Boise specifically for that, to address affordable housing, even though today some of the cost of housing is kind of hard to imagine that that's affordable. But that's what it's designed for. It's an infill design to add diversity to the neighborhood. The landscaping we have is unique and inviting. We have a pathway from the development to the existing new bike path, so there's connectivity with that. All in all, I think this, for the size of the project, this is a great infill project, and I would like the council to consider approval. Sorry for the long wind. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kolchak?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to, one question, I was looking at your pictures of the trash because that seems to be a big issue. All of the what I noticed from the pictures that you took is all of the developments that have it, have the front doors facing the street. Are there any other developments that you're aware of that where they aren't facing the street? And they're pulling all their trashcans to the
Yes, yes, yes. There's a project on 46th, 45th Street. And Adams Street is called Flourish, and that was one of the projects that we did with Neighbor Works. There's another project on 43rd Street, the 43rd Street Town Homes, that have houses facing all different directions, and they put their garbage cans on the street. The one on 45th Street does have houses facing it, but they also have houses facing to the west. There's a sixplex initially off of Adams Street and 40, and Adams Street, 45th is here, and Adams Street runs this way, right? They've got two sixplexes over there. They're fourplexes. And everybody puts their garbage cans either on 45th Street or 40 or Adams Street. And that's a new, that's a new development. That was finished up in 2021. 43rd Street was finished up in And then you've got they'll joke, but that's a development that actually has a road that goes through the property, and they can, they don't have to put their development garbage on the front. So yeah, there's that particular, those two particular projects, a lot of the houses do not face Adams Street, and they still put their garbage out front.
And then another point of clarification on the parking. So the way I understood that is any guest parking would all have to be along 49th Street?
No.
Is that correct?
No, we have two interior guest parking spaces.
Oh, I see those two, yeah.
Okay, we need three and a half. We have two interior, and then the overfill could be on 49th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Yeah. Okay, great. We'll hear from you again here in a few minutes.
I'm gonna go sit down, guys.
Okay, you can sit right, right there, so you don't have to walk back and forth if you choose.
Walking's good.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. And I'd like to note, although the mayor may have done this when he introduced the application tonight, but this item does start on page 54 of your packet. As Mr. Kolchak had noted, there were, there are conflicting recommendations before you tonight. As noted, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this application, and the Design Review Committee did recommend denial of the application. As is already discussed, the two main issues that the design review felt were inadequate were the trash receptacles that are proposed to be serviced from Allworth Street, as well as the waivers, or in conjunction, I would, I would say, with the waivers that are requested specifically related to parking. There are two waivers that are requested related to parking, the first of which is really there, because of the rounding, there are two, two guest parking spaces, two of the four that would be required. And Mr. Kolchak is correct, it's 1.5 for the seven new proposed units of the eight eight lot, eight buildable lot subdivision. And then the second is the seven new proposed units of the subdivision. One of the required parking spaces is proposed to be enclosed, is required by code. However, code does require that two parking spaces are enclosed. In this proposal, only encloses one. There are other waivers that are requested, more than four units to a common drive, pressure irrigation, and setbacks are also included as waivers that have been requested. Waivers can be requested through the planned unit development tool. The, however, the purpose statement is the Design Review Committee had noted for the plan unit development is, notes that it's not a tool to evade code. How it is a tool to create a superior product than would be allowed under conventional code methods. The Planning and Zoning Commission did feel that the pathway that is to the west of the project, bike and pedestrian pathway would allow for bike and pedestrian access up to the green belt. There's the adjacent subdivision that's in construction right now. We'll be installing a pathway, and then the legacy apartments also has a pathway that connects to the green belt. Again, let me make sure I haven't missed any of my notes. The, while the Design Review Committee did recommend denial for this particular application, as Mr. Kolchak noted, they did note, for the record, for city council to know, that they felt that conditions of approval that would help mitigate the strain of the vehicles, the lack of parking, could be additional bicycle racks, and then also connecting the units back to the pathway that is intended to connect to the green belt. And that's where you heard the additional bike rack recommendation. That is in the reconciled document, those additional conditions in the approval. So those conditions, should you follow the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, the additional bike racks, as well as a connection to that pathway, have, have been added into that. And also, for the record, on Friday, you were sent the referenced document that Mr. Kolchak discussed, which is a letter to you, as well as a revised landscaping plan. Should you include that as part of the record? I would ask that you note it on the record as they are late submittals. And you're certainly within your ability to add those to the record tonight. The revised landscaping plan that was provided does show a connection back to that pathway. Just a note on the minor plan unit development, this particular application has too many lots to be considered through the minor plan unit development. Garden City Code allows for a maximum of four lots. This particular application has eight. And it's also outside of the parameters of what Idaho Code would permit. And the other reason that could not be used is because that front house that's not proposed to change is a single-family detached unit, and that's not allowed to occur. There's within a minor plan unit development within Garden City Code. As Mr. Kolchak had noted, the Design Review Committee did feel that there, there was an additional constraint onto the adjacent roadways due to both the parking waiver requests, as well as the trash receptacles being picked up on the street. And they did feel that that could cause a safety issue when the trucks are stopping and picking up the receptacles, as well as the receptacles on the sidewalk themselves are out in the roadway, causing conflict between the users of the facilities and the receptacles. With that, I think I've gone through all of my notes, and I stand for any questions.
Questions to staff?
I do, I do have one other note that I didn't go through. My apologies, mayor, members of the council. As there are two recommendations, typically staff will try to reconcile those and let you know how they've been reconciled. There is a draft decision in your packet that follows the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, with the exception of those couple of potential additional conditions that Design Review suggested, as well as a draft decision in denial. Following the Design Review Committee's recommendation, this body could uphold either of those recommendations, amend either of those recommendations, or table this for more information. There has previously been discussion, Ms. Beal, in the record did go through, looking at previously approved subdivisions, and when they've been approved, and which of those have been allowed to have outdoor or on-street receptacles. As did Mr. Kolchak, there's some conflict in that, and certainly, should the council find that that be information that is needed for review, we could certainly go do a deeper dive on that.
Hey, questions to staff?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you mentioned that receptacles on the roadway, but my understanding from what Mr. Kolchak says is that the, if you on the sidewalk on that red designated, I'm just, just for clarification, is it the roadway or is it on the side, the designated area on the sidewalk?
And
For the pictures?
Mayor, councilmember Jacobs, it could really go either way. To the best of my knowledge, and that's something that I could identify with Republic Services, is that certainly I would suspect that individuals may cart their carts to the red area. They could cart them to the street. I don't know that Republic Services has a designated location on Adams Allworth.
But the development has that space designated for the, that purpose.
Mayor, councilmember Jacobs, there's an existing there's an existing sidewalk that is larger than the standard five feet. There's a small area of red stamped concrete, where I believe, well, I know that's where Mr. Kolchak has indicated that he believes the receptacles would go.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions to staff? Okay. Because it may be germane as we go on, I think, council, I'm going to ask you to make a decision on whether you will receive the late submittal as part of the packet. If you do, I'd like to do that before we get into the public testimony.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, before we vote on, on that, I'd like to know which of my colleagues, and I'll offer which of my colleagues had a chance to review that. I would say, just as we deliberate this particular motion, that I did have a chance to, to look through the late submitted materials, and so I'm, I'm prepared to submit them to the record as a, as a late inclusion, if that's the way the council votes.
Okay, councilmember Heller, would you have?
Yes.
Councilmember Page? Did you have an opportunity?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone's had an opportunity to look at it, so the decision I'm asking for is whether you're gonna accept it into the record is Everyone's had an opportunity to look at it, so the decision I'm asking for is whether you're going to accept it into the record is going to be part of your decision making. Materials.
Mr. Mayor, hearing that all participating council members had a chance to review the late submission. I moved it into the record as a late submission.
Second, a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with that. We will now open the public hearing on SUV FY 2021-0010 Petro Point Town Homes. Sign up sheet. Mrs. Scribner?
Yes.
Yes. If you would go right over here, sir. And welcome. If you would give us your name, address for the record.
Sure, my name is Craig Scribner and I live at 5185 West Elmer. That's just off the road. And. 3703. So I'm in support and you're speaking in support of Petro Point. And. We have been in contract since for 16 months now. And I represent the buyers of that property. Who are also the builders and developers. And I also work with Craig Kolchak on the entitlement. I am an agent with Windermere Powerhouse. And before that, I was an agent at. Brooklyn Southern Beach for over 20 years. Before that, I was employed by Morrison Coates for project management, project control. So I think with the other thing I want to say is I've done two projects from scratch in Garden City. Strawberry Land, the cottages and the gables, they're very high quality. And we're happy to put those in there. And I really believe, and also I've done, I've worked in 22 different subdivisions and 10 of them, the lower 10 of them. Helped put together with the builder, with the developer and with whoever's doing the entitlement. And I think this is a great project. I think it's suitable for the location. The, the architecture's been improved from what our initial submittal was. We have a landscape architect who's done all of the landscaping. I think it's, it's a quality project. And let me see here. Quality builder, the builder, the Jensen's. I worked with them on a project just up on Glenwood by Capitol High. There's 16 townhomes up there, three story townhomes. He worked on that. We did another small project in West Boise and his son is now joining you and Jim's been a builder his whole life. His son now is returning and really wants to be a part of the development process. And so that's a great team, happy enforcement to be able to work with them. So I think Petro Point is a good idea. It's well designed, it's in a great location. I hope, I think that Craig has addressed some of the issues that were risen or brought up and. I think the positive thing that you need to probably remember is this was initially a trailer court. And through a lot of hard work, design, engineering, we, we planned to do that. I've marketed all 20 subject or all 20 substitutions, but the 10 that I've been responsible for. And I plan to hopefully market this one too. Do you have any questions?
Great, any questions for Mr. Scribner? I don't see any, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone that's joining us on Zoom that would like to testify? If so, use the raise your hand tool so that we can recognize you. Lisa, I don't see any hands raised, do you?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Seeing that no one else has indicated an interest in testifying. Mr. Kolchak, our procedure allows you for a final word, sir. All you have to do is make it to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, council members, what Mr. Scribner mentioned that I, I too think this is a great infill project. Matter of fact, every project that I've done in Garden City so far has been an infill project, some of them have been challenging. This has been more challenging than most, but if it wasn't challenging, it wouldn't be fun. I think that it adds. Positivity to the community, connectivity to the community. And meets the needs of that connectivity through the comprehensive plan for the city garden city. Obviously, I'm for it and I may be a little biased, but it's a good project. It serves a need that I don't think has been met in that area with a low income housing. It brings diversity to the development of that area. With that, I'll close any statement.
Great, thank you, sir. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Yes, I'm sorry.
Some questions.
Certainly, certainly. Mr. Kolchak. Yeah, we'll recall you.
Thank you for, sorry to stop you mid step there, Mr. Kolchak. Thank you for taking some time to be with us today. Earlier, you, in your first set of statements, you talked about. And I, I don't hear too well, but you talked about the bike racks and, and did you say something about unsafe or you wouldn't trust? Can you restate that?
Where I would be, whether it's Garden City or Boise or wherever, start whatever. I, with, with the. We have connectivity to the proposed bike path that goes from Allworth to the development to the north.
Mr. Kolchak, would you move a little to your right? There you go.
Sorry. Hey, here's the microphone. It, it brings connectivity to us, to the development to the north and to the. Sorry, to the apartment buildings. With that in mind. Leaving your bike out anywhere overnight connected to a bike rack. I wouldn't recommend it, it's just, that's just me. I think it's great if you're coming in with your bike rack to utilize the common area. You've got your bike, you drive it up there, you put it in the bike rack, you use the picnic table, you hang out, you enjoy the open space we've got. But to leave it overnight, there's no way in heck I would do that, no matter what city I was in.
I guess that's, I'm looking for clarification, that's because you'd be concerned of theft or vandalism or what?
Yeah, you'd be vulnerable to theft.
I see. Okay, thank you.
But I think the bike path is a great idea for pulling up on your bicycle and hitting the, the common area and using the bike. To get you there and if you want to go from there to the bike path that brings you out to the bike path along the greenbelt. You've got that option or even a shorter distance around the corner, there's a major access point off of 49th Street that gives you access to the greenbelt as well.
I have one other question, if I may. In your testimony, you talked about the stamped concrete, the, I believe it's red, the brick pattern on the sidewalk. And I'm familiar with that and I, I am also familiar that, that, with. It's the funding for that, which was provided by Urban Renewal. But I'm not an urban renewal expert. Do you, are you aware of a purpose statement that says that that's to house mailboxes and trash carts?
I don't know, there's a statement involved there, but that's the only place you can put the trash cans. You can't put it on the street, there's a bike path that's on the street. So the way that's set up, there's a bike path on either side of the street. There's eastbound and westbound lanes and there's a median in the middle. The only option you have, and that goes from the start of Allworth all the way down to Veterans Parkway and beyond. Is to put it on that red space and talking with ACHD. The, one of the members of the planning and zoning committee was an engineer out there. And that's why he, you know, said it was okay to put there, it's the only place you can put it. You can't put it on the street, there's a bike path right there. And there's no way that Republic would allow that to be there. That would cause. Congestion. The other deal that you guys need to know, gentlemen need to know, is that there's no parking on Allworth or. Adam Street from one end to the other. When they widened it and changed the, the elevations of that, they specifically made it so there's no parking there. So no parking, no trash cans, the, the space is there for that. And, and by having that, that little strip, a two foot strip, which is exactly the width of a trash can. You can also put your mailbox there, street signs there and power poles there and still not impede any pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk. Specifically designed for that, so. That answers your question.
It does, thanks. I was just looking for more clarification on that because of the testimony of congestion and conflicts that came from another. Another person's state.
Yeah, there, there is no congestion, it's designed that way.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you, thank you.
Hobble away.
Well. Because I don't know what's going to happen in deliberation because of the unique circumstance of design review and planning zone having different things. So I am going to reserve the opportunity to recall you if we need to for some reason. So if you want to walk all the way back, fine, if you want to sit right there close, that's up to you.
You gotta rub some dirt on it.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want, point of clarification, I'm sorry, I'm a little redundant.
No, no.
Mr. Stonebar mentioned that, you know, we have a conflict between the two committees.
Correct.
Clients, and then they had come to reconciliation and that's. Things that, you know, they could see being approved based on those conditions. And I just, are you okay with those that were recommended?
Like the bike rack, it's just a bike rack, that's, you know, another little added space to the common area. We have the room for it, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with the, the parking though. There's a city code that requires an APUD and. Kind of get my hackles up with the APUD, the APUD is great, but it's not site specific, right? It's a generic thing that says, if you do a APUD, you gotta have this and you gotta have that, right? One of the requirements is that you have to have two covered parking spaces. The design on these townhomes, because of the constricted strin, uh, space we have in there, they're narrow. We don't have the ability to do a two car garage. Ergo, the two covered spaces. But we do have the ability to have a covered space in the garage. And because we've got over 20 feet driveway adjacent to the access road. We do have space to put the other parking space in that, that driveway. So you've got the two spaces that are required for each unit right there. And then the other requirement is you need to have 0.5 spaces per each unit. We have seven units, that's three and a half, we've got two spaces on site. We do have the ability to park on 49th Street, it's not specifically designated as guest parking. But wouldn't take a rocket scientist to figure if you pulled up and the parking spaces were filled, you'd pull over to. Which is allowable on 49th Street that you pull over and park in 49th. And again, there's only seven spaces there to begin with.
Thank you.
Hey, anything else? Okay, again, subject to. Reserving the right to recall Mr. Kolchak or Ms. Thornborough if we need to. Those would be the only two people allowed that I would allow to be participate further. That'll close the general public hearing at 6:46. And council, it's now before you. Again, your options as you deliberate on this, if you sustain. Design review or planning zoning decision or the hybrids that I think Ms. Thornborough explained. Okay. You can deny the application or you can demand it. So with that, it's open to deliberation. Anyone wants to? Wants to give an opinion?
I was, Mr. Mayor, may I ask him, this Thornborough, to. Just to summarize that reconciliation. Once more, or the hybrid is the mayor put it.
Mayor, council member Heller. On the, the, the recommendation that's drafted per the planning and zoning commission. On page 18, number 18 and number 19 are conditions of approval that they did not actually recommend. Those are conditions of approval that the design review committee. Who made the recommendation after the planning and zoning commission. Had mentioned that they did want this council to know that they felt, should this council move. Forward in the affirmative for this application. That adding additional bicycle racks and direct access from the, the front doors of the units back to that bicycle. A pedestrian connection to the green belt would be additional conditions of approval that they would recommend.
Stormbro, you have a host of non-compliant issues in the design review. Report, were those the only conditions that design review suggested in order to? I don't know if I'm misusing the, the language here, but in order to make the project compliant?
And mayor, council member Heller, the, the design review did make a recommendation for denial for this application. And, and then they did ask that the record reflect in their discussion post the motion. That those two conditions would be something that could advance. But they did not feel that they're recommending that those conditions would advance it enough for that recommendation.
So would be insufficient to, to advance for recommendation?
And.
Is that, is that correct?
Mayor, council member Heller, that is how I understood the motion and that there were three separate motions made. And the final motion didn't, the first two motions were for approval with additional conditions and they both did not advance for lack of second. And the third was for denial and then the discussion related thereof included in those two items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jenna, so while you're there, because we had the, the different discussion, the planning zoning commission. So I, I just. The matters in front of the council now. Both bodies are appointed bodies, five members on the planning commission, three members on the design review. And we, we have differing opinion and, and it's up to the council to. Resolve that, so. In this instant. One doesn't necessarily have more authority in their recommendation than the other, they're just, they're recommending bodies. And it's been left to you to kind of sort this out. So. The way I'm hearing it described is if you were looking at the planning zoning commission approval. And you added the elements that. and you added the elements that Jenna articulated from the Design Review Committee, am I misreading that, that that would make it? I don't want, no, I don't want to use the word compliant, because there's some subjective elements in that, but palatable. I, I, I don't know that I'm quite understanding.
Mayor.
Design Review Committee kind of going out, but if nadding that.
Well, may I comment here? Mr. Mayor, I, I think it's a nod to recent court decision that suggested a denied project needs to be accompanied with a pathway to approval. I might be wrong about that, but that's how I interpreted it.
Point. So anyway, I don't get to vote, so I'll be quiet and let you guys.
I don't want to beat, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Thornborough. This is the third time we've asked for your patience and clarification, but there, there weren't recommendations made by the Design Review Committee to address the covered parking, the parking, those, those issues, and I mean, there were a number of co-entries in the decision document.
And Mayor, Councilmember Heller, that is correct. And I may grab the, the, I did not walk up here with all the paper. There is in the, the Design Review decision, this may actually have it, I may be able.
I have that. Would you like me to?
And on page five of the draft recommend, or of the recommendation.
Do we know what page that is in the packet?
And Mayor members of the council on page 84 of the packet, which is page five of the draft decision document. In the affirmative, following the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, there is a discussion, or the, the proceedings on the June 6th Design Review Committee meeting that are summarized. Item number G is the first motion.
Okay. Let's keep clearly under our mics for the deliberation, so.
Mr. Mayor, could I maybe try to provide a point of order to try to help?
Sure.
Counsel, I'm looking at that same page. I just want to make sure the record's clear that committee member Labrie moved to approve it, and it died for a second. The committee member Heard moved to approve it with some conditions, and that died for like, lack of a second. And the committee member Grisham moved to deny it. And I just want to make sure the record's clear that Ms. Grisham's not, not a member of the committee anymore. So the person that made the motion to deny it is no longer on the committee, whatever that's for.
That, Mr. Mayor, that, and that motion passed unanimously, correct?
Curiously, yes.
Well.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question for Councilmember Page. You mentioned that there needs to be a pathway. It's not even used to be a pathway to. So what you said that's the way you interpret, what did you interpret that pathway to be? Because I'm a little fuzzy on that.
Uh huh. The pathway would be, it's, well, it's in some point in of that same document that the pathway would be to address, correct the parking deficiency, resolving the hazardous condition, and to provide for, for trash, for trash service, not along Allworth. And, and I want to make a point clear, if I may, Councilmember Jacobs. I don't believe that the court said, "We solve the problem." We provide a pathway where something could be approved. It's, respectfully, it's not our, it's not our application to solve, right? It's that we provide a pathway, which I think is what the spirit of the Design Review motion was that passed unanimously. Hey, here's two things we feel are insufficient, and we might feel otherwise if these two things were resolved.
That said, you are the decision makers here, so you oversee the authority of design review. I do want to mention one thing on the, on the, when we have claims of something's unsafe related to traffic. I'm not sure we're the, we, any of us, without a recommendation from our police departments, maybe are the ones that make the judgment about traffic safety. So just wanted to caution us a little bit about, about that. Now that you can't, you, you can, but.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In, in the spirit of deliberation, I'd like to offer some, some of my thoughts. You know, councilmembers, anytime we have a split decision like this, it, it's, it's a challenge, you know? And we're seeing that. We can see this project go both ways. We have a need for housing. I think to Mr. Colcheck's point, and I don't disagree, this proposal is probably better than what was there before. But just because something is better doesn't mean that it's adequate, or that it complies. Yes, it could be better, but that's not the same as this is ideal. It's, just because something's better doesn't mean it's sufficient. It just means it's better, better than. I, we heard testimony that essentially constituted hearsay of a Garden City police officer. We don't have an official statement one way or the other about traffic or safety. So I think that, you know, as far as, that, I don't find that particularly persuasive. That's a hearsay statement. On the, on the matter of trash, we have an agency comment about that. And it's concerning. It involves conflicts and congestion. You know, they're providing a workaround like any contractor would provide. They're in business of doing business with, with Garden City and being a solution solver, solution maker. However, you know, reading between the lines there, which as I interpret it, is, you know, just because something can be done does not make it ideal, does not make it our, our best practice. What concerns me about the matter before us is, you know, the, the two, the two obvious things, parking and, and trash. But moreover, there's, there's, you know, just a large number of, of requests for waivers. You know, there, there's two related to parking. One, to waive the condition that no more than four units on a common drive, so that's, that's, that's three. There's a waiver, a problem with pressurized irrigation, and then there's a setback issue. You know, it's an issue of putting a lot of things in a small piece of, of land, a small parcel. With that amount of, of waivers, the fact that we have a split decision and agency comments, I, I personally lean towards sustaining the design review finding and, and rejecting the findings of the, of the planning and zoning, or better stated, to deny this project as written. If, if I were to provide a pathway, it's, it's that that the design review gave. Fix the parking, fix the trash problem. Maybe it's a density problem. It's, that's the pathway I see. Thank you.
Other comments, opinions?
Mr. Mayor, I, I share those concerns. And I wish there'd been a reconciliation that addressed those issues before we reached this point, but.
Mr. Wadams. What I've heard to, to, if the council denies the application, then it can't be brought back.
For a year. If it's, Mr. Mayor, the way our code is written is if it, if it comes back and it's, it could come back if it's completely different, but if it's similar, they would have a problem. They'd have to wait a year.
So, and I'm not saying the council would entertain this, but if they wanted to give the applicant a chance to remedy, maybe they can't with the current design. Then what, what would be a mechanism to do that?
Well, I think, Mr. Mayor, you could continue this matter, leave, leave it open, continue to a date certain, and tell the applicant that if you have more additional information, we would consider it on that date certain. I think the council would have discretion to do something like that.
Okay. I just wanted to throw something out there. If it's a council position, you don't want to grant any waivers, I think, in difference to the applicant. Maybe you ought to indicate that. Because it looks like remedying all those is probably a deal killer. But I think these little bitty infill projects are really challenging, and we don't have a real distinction in our codes between a parcel that's measured in square feet, and parcel that's measured in acres, and that, that's, that's challenging. So if there's any thought of what you see as priorities, or if you want a project without any waiver requests, I think difference to the applicant ability to go forward, we ought to indicate that. If there's no appetite for waivers, then that guides us one direction. If we're gonna want to insist that covered parking means covered parking, period. For example, even though the space there for parking is available. I'm just trying to think of Council President Page, just a way to, to guide the applicant. Where I see this going, whether there's an appetite.
And Mr. Mayor, if I, you know, if I may add, I don't want to say the words that I have no appetite for, for waivers, but I think there's two big problems that, that need to be solved. And anyone that's been in Garden City for more than a year is familiar with other projects that have gone very well, and I think are a feather in the cap of Garden City. But we have to look at each project in a vacuum, and this project needs to be right first. I, I would like to think it can get there, but I don't think what's before us is there. Maybe it doesn't pencil. I'm not a
No, I know.
person to solve that.
I'm not prejudging that. I just, if you're gonna, if you consider a continuance, I'm just, I don't know how to guide the applicant. And if you know, give him some indication of, you know, if you want each of the waivers you mentioned solved, then if we indicate that.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I, I don't have an appetite to avoid waivers either, but, but I think you, you presented the remarks well, Council President Page. I, I would, I would hope there, there's an opportunity for the Design Review Committee to reach reconciliation, at least addressing some of those. And, and again, I don't think it's our, our job to say which specifically, but I, I don't like the idea of one, one body saying yes, another body saying no, and there, there has to be a, there doesn't have to be, but I'd, I'd hope there'd be a middle ground in there that would be reachable by the contractor and, and accommodating the city's concerns, the Design Review Committee specifically. And I don't know if a continuance allows that without our being specific, more specific than that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could try, just to give some legal direction, maybe. And I think another option, and Jen, I could correct you if I'm wrong, is you could remand it back to Design Review and Planning and Zoning and say, figure it out, come back with some new recommendations. I think that's within your discretion. And the other thing I think I need to say, putting my risk manager hat on, if this project, if any project's denied, and it's determined that the criteria are subjective, we could have a problem.
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor, another question. I would be interested in understanding what you had mentioned is going back and research some of those other projects regarding, Nick, you mentioned to Stoneborough about the approval of trash on, trash that goes on the street. Research that I, my concern about trash is that there's space there. I'm pretty confident people aren't going to put them on the street because they have that zone. I think a part of it is, ideally, I think the city would like to have those being picked up within the development, rather than just as, because that whole corridor is going to be future development, if you look at the map. We're going to have more and more and more development, and then, you know, is that going to be kind of a precedence right work, that we're going to line that street? And then it could literally become an issue with pedestrian walkways and things like that. And so that's probably more of my concern. I'm pretty confident that the people in your development would put them on the sidewalk. But I'm just worried about future development and how that looks like, and I'd be interested to understand that a little bit better.
And Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, what I had noted is that.
Can you minimize the, those that have joined us online, so we can see what's on the screen?
Um, Ms. Beal, uh, the Associate Planner for the city, um, when, when she wrote her report and presented, uh, she did, uh, do an analysis of the nearby subdivisions, recent subdivisions that had been approved. And whether or not the refuse was required, uh, to be internal to the subdivision. Uh, Mr. Colcheck had also, um, pointed out several, uh, there are pictures within your packet of subdivisions. Um, my comment was that we could go through all subdivisions to, uh, a date certain and review how those were handled, uh, with refuse specifically, if you felt that that was pertinent to your, your decision tonight, that there are some, um, I don't want to say conflict, but I know that, uh, Ms. Beal's analysis concluded, uh, that, uh, at least in the recent, um, approvals, that, uh, refuse has been required to be internal. Um, and Mr. Colcheck did find, uh, some, um, that obviously he has pictures, uh, where refuse is not, it's on street pickup. And so we could certainly do a deep dive and look at all of the subdivisions, if they were specifically required or not, if that came post-approval, uh, that, that was my comment in that there is, um, um, I don't want to say conflict, but there, when in history or which subdivisions, if there have been any that, uh, looked at that differently and what those mitigating factors may have been, uh, if they were specifically, uh, discussed at any point in time. I do also want to point out, uh, that on page one sixteen to one seventeen of the packet, um, I believe this is the, the, the reference that, uh, Councilmember, uh, Paige has noted in, in what path could be, there be forward. Um, should there be a decision in the denial, um, where it notes that, um, per the, the Design Review Committee recommendations, uh, that could, compliance can be met by providing the code required number of guest parking onsite and providing onsite waste management and vehicular turnaround.
There's a, uh, Mr. Colcheck, if you can make your way back up here, I'll allow you to respond. If I reserve that, I had a feeling you were going to get here.
Planning and zoning hearing that we talked about, that specific item is, is, uh, trash pickup within the interior of the site. And one of the council members specifically asked me, why couldn't we do a turnaround in that area? And then you could pull in and do it like a hammerhead and do whatever. You know, we've got specific criteria that we need to meet. One of them is open space requirements. We initially had eight units. Now, when we went to our, um, pre-application meeting, it is correct that, that you're only allowed four, but within that pre-application meeting, we told them, hey, we'd like to do eight. Is that okay? Like no problem, just submit a waiver and we've got that approved. That was, you know, we've had, let me try to calm down, but we've had four design hearing meetings. And each one of those meetings, instead of saying, hey, you need to do this, or this looks great, they continually added additional items that we had to meet to satisfy their, for lack of a better term, quirkiness. Um, we initially, when, when you have a subdivision, well, a subdivision like this, that's facing an arterial road like Allworth or, uh, or, uh, Adams Street, one of the requirements in the code says that you have to have direct access to the sidewalk and to the street. And we designed that accordingly, so that the two front units that are coming off of Allworth, which would actually have an Allworth address, had a sidewalk that came out to, um, the street. I think it was either the third one or the fourth one. That was the third hearing. They said, hey, you know what? I don't like the frontage of that. You need to change the frontage. You know, we, we don't like the sidewalk that's there. You guys told me that it was okay to begin with, and now you're adding something else. I, I felt totally persecuted by Design Review. Because they had something in their head, specifically the nonsensical thing that, that trash was a, uh, issue there. And one of the guys told me, well, you know, the trash comes by and they're loud and noisy and it's just, you know, a disruptive thing, and I don't think we need to have it on the street. I've got video and I've got pictures of it. Everyone on Allworth that has a home there puts their garbage on the street. They've been doing that for decades. It's nothing new. It's not dangerous. It's not anything that anybody disagrees with. Uh, the January letter that I got from Republic gave me three choices of how they would prefer to pick up the trash. One of them was a turnaround. They realized that if I put a turnaround in, I'm going to lose another lot. I won't meet my open space requirements because I can't include the, the turnaround we've got in there. So that makes it non-developable. And I said, okay, well, they want to back in, but you know, that's an option you could do. But because it's an arterial, that's kind of dangerous and I totally agree with that. Or, you know, they didn't say it was dangerous or non-preferred. Your third option was put it on the sidewalk. Period. And then Design Review says, well, that's dangerous and that's subjective. It's not, there's nothing proving about that.
Okay.
Uh, the, the fact that I've had multiple additions, like, oh, we've got a, you know, the last one. Well, you know, and they specifically said, hey, look, if you put a connectivity from, um, the front doors of these houses to, um, the, the pathway, we're going to waive the, uh, parking requirements. Okay. I mean, it says that in the fricking Design Review thing. And then, you know, somebody said, hey, look, I want to approve this. And then one guy says, well, I don't want, I don't want a second. And then somebody says, well, I want to approve it. Well, I don't want it. You know, um, it's not rocket science. And, you know, these waivers are in place for a specific reason. You know, you've got a PUD that has certain requirements, but there's no site-specific requirements. You know, it's not a subdivision that has interior roads. It's got one access into the property. You can't turn around there. It's only ninety-eight feet deep. You know, um, so you, you know, the waivers are theirs for a specific person, purpose. You know, they mentioned this in the Design Review, oh, you've got four, um, waivers. They approved them. They said they were okay. So, you know, I, I don't understand, you know, I use the waivers not because I'm trying to cheat the system because it's site-specific. It's a small, little teeny-tiny postage stamp deal. We want to make it look good with the city. The setback, uh, waiver was normally the front is twenty feet, but because of the depth of the property, I wanted to reduce it to fifteen. You still got fifteen feet. If I challenge anybody to take a look at the landscaping that we've got and notice that it's five foot shorter than somebody else's. I just, the, the personalities within the Design Review were at best confrontational. And not w- willing to, it was kind of weird. It was, they're willing to compromise and then they weren't, and then they were, and then somebody wasn't. And then, you know, I want to approve this thing and move it forward because planning and zoning improvement. So here's the way normally in a presentation, when you're submitting something to the city, you go Design Review, Planning and Zoning, City Council, right? Well, we had a Design Review, our fourth one planned for, um, sometime in May. And then they said, well, you know, we're going to change that to June. And well, I've got a plan, I've got a, uh, Planning and Zoning Hearing in May. Well, you can move it forward, but I mean, it's, it's been this moving target, you know? We've been dinking with this thing for over a year now because of Design Review. And I, I didn't want to move Planning and Zoning up and then, then the City Council into Ja- July. So I said, you know what? I'm going to stand with the merit that we have and the submittals that we've put together and let Planning and Zoning take a look at it. And Planning and Zoning had the same concerns about the parking and, and the turnaround and the trash and everything. But we talked it through during that hearing. And, you know, they have a common sense to understand what I was talking about. And we're not trying to dodge it, that, you know, you want to do this, but if you do that, then we can't do this. If you do this, we can't do that. And the way we designed this thing, I mean, we initially had eight units. Now we've got seven. I don't think we could make it work with six. Because, again, the PUD application is, should be more site-specific. You're like, uh, the mayor said, you're not working with acres, you're working with square feet here. This is a, a good project and it's not because I, I'm doing it because I want to do it. I've done five of these projects within Garden City. Each one of them are challenges, but each one of them was good and a lot tighter and more restricted than this one. And all of a sudden, now I'm getting this four design hearings over uh, an eight-month period for the same little deal. And each time I go there, they're adding, oh, well, um, we don't like the way this looks, add this, or we don't like the way that looks, add this.
Well, thank, thank you, Mr. Phil.
I'm rambling right now.
Yeah, you're, you're rambling and we've got, uh, we've restated those things.
Anyway.
So, but, but thank you.
For letting me ramble.
That, that helps. Okay.
Right.
Yeah. There's a, um, I appreciate Mr. Wadams, uh, remand recommendation, but, uh, we don't have a complete Design Review Committee to remand it to right now. So I think, uh, if you do anything, uh, you need to retain the matter under your purview of the council. So, uh, your, your options are to modify it this evening and approve it, approve it and submit it or deny it. If there's additional information you want generated from the staff, uh, we can hold it open and continue it, uh, in two weeks. Or whenever the meeting in Ju- July is first, I don't know if it's exactly two weeks or not.
Mr. Mayor, I, you know, I, I really hate talking during deliberations, but I just want to, I feel like I should mention this. If, if this is a denial, it's under Lupa, so they, they would have to file a request for reconsideration within fourteen days. So maybe what the council's looking for would be in that request for reconsideration. I don't know. But that's, that's another option because it is under Lupa. It's a subdivision.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just just an observation. So I, I'm looking at the space, what you've got, and I don't know, given the space, how much different it, it could really be. So, um, you know, I think, given the dynamic of, I tend to agree with, um, the observation about, about the trash in having that strip and, and people would, would put their, with the trash there, a little bit of concern about that being, um, kind of precedentally further development, but I think given that's what the neighborhood is accustomed to, and that's what happens every Tuesday, it's, it's probably not as big of a concern of mine, uh, anymore. In terms of the, the parking, you know, there really just isn't space for, for trying to de- develop this small space. I don't, and I'm not, unless you encroach into that other half of that lot to make, you know, to add space, which is, it does sound like option. I'm more inclined to, to approve the development, uh, given that there are two spaces, that big driveways that have a garage, they can accommodate both cars. One and a half cars of lack of, that, to a degree of granting the way for the parking for a vehicle and a half. That's kind of my perspective.
Okay. Um, any further deliberation? Not, somebody prepared to make a motion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Sutter Point Town Homes. So FY twenty twenty-one dash oh oh one zero. Given the adding of the, of the bike, uh, to accommodate that and, and some of the reconciliation. It did have a Design Review in terms of what they've asked for.
Okay, you're referring to, uh, what Ms. Dornborough
Yes.
brought up. Okay. And, yeah, if we get a, a second, then we will uh, restate those for that motion. Do I have a second on the motion? Okay, hearing no second, uh, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we keep this public hearing open to a date certain. Uh, not to be remanded to, uh, Planning and Zoning or the Design Review Committee, but to turn it back to, uh, the applicant to see or work with staff and see if there's a workaround. I'll leave it to the wisdom of the staff for what the date certain should be. I know these things take time. But I, uh, would rather see that than an outright denial that puts uh, what has potential to be a great project in jeopardy of never happening.
And I'll second that. Okay. That would put us at July eleventh, Jenna. I'm getting that. Let's.
July eleventh would be the next City Council meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Are you good with that, Jenna?
Um, Mayor, um, what I suspect would happen, that would alleviate the need for re-noticing, um, on a turnaround, uh, time by the time that, uh, the, the applicant would likely submit something to staff for staff to be able to review that and get it in the packet. There may be a, a continuance requested if the materials aren't received in time.
Are we collectively comfortable that these specific issues need to be discussed further, which is the guest parking, the trash, uh, the bike racks? We had no discussion on the setback waiver, but that's a waiver.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't, um, I'd be happy with the setback and I don't see a need for another bike rack.
So we're looking for some reconciliation on the guest parking and the trash?
That's a yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay. So, um, the motion we're looking for would be to continue this. I have the, uh, option to reopen the public hearing, I suppose. Uh, so, what we'll do is we'll, uh, if I get a motion, we will continue this item to a date certain, uh, July eleventh. Twenty twenty-two, six group.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I move that we continue SUB FY two thousand twenty-one dash oh oh one zero to a date certain, July eleven, twenty twenty-two. For the, uh, purposes mentioned in discussion.
Second, a motion and second, any further discussion? I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You opposed? Great motion carries. Hey. No need, no need. We we do our best to get this figured out. Okay, uh, council, that, uh, that concludes the regular business on the meeting tonight. We do need an executive session, uh, after which After which we will adjourn.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I move that, was there a more?
No, 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 it's.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move that in accordance with Idaho Code subsection seventy-four two oh six one F, we move to executive session. To communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal. Options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but eminently likely to be litigated, after which the regular City Council meeting will adjourn.
Second, I had a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing then, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll convene the executive session in five minutes if the chance for everybody.